It's just a site. It is an integral part of the Churchill community. Look at it as the new heart of Churchill. And how can other communities access the site by walkability and by bike? What are some don'ts? Just reply. Increased traffic congestion is a negative. This is a once in a generation kind of development. It should not be a single monstrous building. Make it a destination. Make it a showpiece. A place that would attract young people with places to go and things to do. In fact, the proposed fulfillment center is clearly an industrial packaging facility. The zoning for C one, C dash one is commercial. This distinction is of the utmost importance. Counsel and the applicant cannot shoehorn it into a commercial zone just because the industrial zone does not exist in Churchill. It just doesn't fit. I'd like to share my screen again. What is the difference between commercial and industrial zone? While the average person, I'm sorry. Did I fail to share my screen?
Yes, you failed to share your screen.
What is the difference between commercial and industrial zone? While the average person may think that industrial and commercial zoning would be one in the same, given that they both involve non-communicative land, this isn't actually the case. Important factors in commercial zoning include how much parking is available and how close the establishment is to religious buildings or schools. Industrial zoning is also commonly used for areas involving businesses. But this thing is more for the manufacturing or packaging side. Some common buildings and industrial zone areas include storage facilities, plants, and even airports. Industrial zoning is concerned with how much noise the establishment is going to produce, any environmental concerns for the surrounding area, and how much land the buildings take up. No one on the envisioning Churchill panel suggested a massive industrial warehouse with this associate pollutes. This facility violates every conceivable aspect of the municipal comprehensive plan in the envisioning Churchill C dash one well-being recommendations. On more than one occasion, I've heard the praise from a couple of council members that we are your neighbors too. Being neighbors more than just proximity to one another. It means looking out for the welfare of one another, such as our neighbors who live in Beulah Road, Ram Boulevard, Greensburg Pike, and William Penn Highway. Our neighbors who will most feel the brunt of their quality of life being destroyed by this monstrous industrial warehouse. Their health, safety, and welfare should not be sacrificed at the altar of Amazon. Churchill and Amazon cannot coexist. One must die. And do not let the fact that they include the threat of case law in their curative amendment sway you to bow to their pressure. In particular, Borough Council of Churchill Borough versus Pagel Incorporated. The two projects are vastly different. As I wrap up my public comments, I had to ask myself these questions. Do I think that counsel, the mayor, the city manager, the planning commission, and other support staff work hard for Churchill? I do. Do I think they want what is best for Churchill? I do. However, don't take it for granted that you know what is best for Churchill without grave consideration of the myriad negative impacts this facility will force on its residents. Consider the very serious challenges to the validity of Hillwood's impact studies by the residents of Churchill and their experts. I appeal to each of you, I appeal to each of you individually. Choose wisely and out of a deep sense of conviction as to what is best for your neighbors and not out of a predetermined group decision if this is the case. Each of you individually have a voice. So it is my hope and my prayer that you vote no on the applicant's conditional use application and save Churchill. This is a generational opportunity. Please do not leave a failed legacy attached to your name. Thank you for all the work you do. I realize it is not easy. And also I'd like to apologize for all the technical glitches. I forced it up on you folk tonight. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Waller.
If you can blame it on, on a bad tutor, I guess we didn't get it on our practice session, that's good enough.
Okay.
Uh, Alex.
Yeah, Eric Rotzinger.
All right, Mr. Rotzinger.
My name is Eric Rotzinger. I live at twenty-three seventy-three Hollywood Drive. I've been a Churchill resident for thirty-two years. I have a PhD in biochemistry from the University of Pittsburgh. I've worked at Carnegie Mellon for forty-one years. Twenty-six of those years I was associate dean for undergraduate education in the melancholist's science. I'm now fully retired and have been granted the title Professor Emeritus of the melancholist's science. Um, I, like all residents of Churchill, want to preserve not only the character, but also the long-term financial stability of Churchill. My presentation tonight will um be in two parts. I'd like to play an interview with Senator Jay Costa and then to supplement this interview with my remarks in support of the project.
Mr. Rotzinger, before you press play here, knowing that we have about fifteen minutes left for tonight's hearing, can you, can you tell us approximately how long you believe your presentation will be?
I've got about, uh, I've got about, I might go a little bit after eleven, but not much more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So here's the, here's the interview with Senator Costa.
Curiosity Stream has thousands of documents to nature.
We're all working hard for profile making.
Proposal. Now, a lot of people say this is a slam dunk, should be a no-brainer, should have everything figured out by now. But there's a process that you have to go through. And we figured, you know what, there's no better person to just give it to us straight. Tell us what's going on, the good, the bad, the ugly, the warts and all, and how close we are to losing this project than somebody who's represented that region for a long time, state senator, District Forty-three. Jay Costa joins us on the Disk Institute of Pittsburgh news line. Good morning, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Oh, good morning, Kevin. Happy to be with you.
Now, this seems like from somebody from the outside, when you drive through that section of town, you realize the momentum in our region is in the North Hills, maybe in the West Hills too. That section, the East Hills, needs a win. They need something to hang their hat on, especially since the Westinghouse property has been sitting idle for so long. How important is this project, the Amazon project, to that side of town?
Well, Kevin, I think you're right. I think for a number of years, we've been working with local officials here to draw attention to the opportunities, the business opportunities. There's so many folks here in Eastern Corridor. Uh, and we've met with county folks, we've met with state officials and the like to try to draw attention to this region. And this is an opportunity that has presented itself. There have been other recommendations for that site that have fallen through for a variety of reasons. But there's no question that this is probably the most significant, single largest project that has been recommended for this Eastern Corridor for a number of years. So it's an important project if it's, if it's done right and, and meets the criteria for being able to be what they needed to be. Uh, that conversation is taking place as you, as you stated, it's going through the process now. And will take some time before this process is completed.
Now, if, if I was Amazon, this is dragged out for a, for a long time and it's cost them a lot of money. It's cost a lot of people a lot of time and effort and anxiety as well. Um, how close, I mean, if you're an executive with Amazon, don't you just say, you know what, they don't want it, move it, move it somewhere else. Put it, put it in another state or put it in another section of that region, put it in the North Hills somewhere. Uh, how close are we to losing this opportunity?
I can't speak to the inner workings of Amazon and how close we are to losing. What I can tell you, there have been times over the course of the past two years uh, that those conversations have taken place. I think what they do recognize is that the value of that particular location uh, to part of its distribution system, um, I think that's important. And then the workforce, I think, is something that's very important to them. And the quality of the workmanship that we'll get from folks, both labor building the building, of course, uh, which will be thousands of jobs, but also the number of jobs will be coming from the region. Certainly not just from the Churchill community, but from many of the surrounding regions, surrounding communities that, you know, the Woodland Hill School District, for example, to work with the kids. I think it's just, there's a symmetry there that I think that they recognize is important and the tend-to-day outweighs uh, their decision to want to leave the area.
Okay, good. So we still got them on the hook. That's a good thing. And like you said, you know, the kids and, you know, workers in Braddock and Forest Hills and different regions along the, the river there. There are going to be some of the thousand or fifteen hundred people that are actually going to work in that fulfillment center.
Oh, there's no question. It's every community that's around the location, whether it be Wilkes-Barre, Penn Hills, Braddock, Marbraddock, Rankin, Forest Hills, Wilkes, you name it. Uh, folks in those communities will be the ones who would be given preference for position and also the relationship that they intend to build with Woodland Hill School District uh, as a feeder system, so to speak, for young kids coming out of high school and being able to go to work in the school or excuse me, at the location, uh, looking at the STEM program that they're coordinating with and allowing these kids to work and go to college as well and pay for that. Those are the type of things that I think that we have to look at. However, we just can't forget about the other side of the, the conversation, which I think you've talked about a little bit. Uh, there are legitimate concerns that need to be addressed and have been addressed over the course of the past several year or two. Uh, you know, traffic patterns, traffic flows, the volume of traffic, uh, you know, environmental issues that need to be addressed. And I think that this is the process that allows that to take place, uh, that we're going through right now with this conditional use. Um, the plan has been approved unanimously by the planning commission at Churchill. So however, it came with about four pages of conditions that the developer must meet going forward. Uh, many of which, and probably all of them, will likely be incorporated, I suspected, to some final agreement along those lines, if there is one. Uh, but those, all those issues need to continue to be addressed. The number of trees, the number of road changes, all those things are an integral part of this conversation. And that's what this process is designed for. And there have been a number of hearings, and I really applaud Churchill Council for taking the time to hear the issues that are raised by uh, the neighbors and residents of the community, and they're being very thoughtful and very deliberate in their processing uh, this information before they make a decision.
You're right, it is a process and they happen to do a great job with it. On Monday, they had a hundred and fifty people participate in a Zoom meeting. Last night, they had another, uh, public hearing as well about the redevelopment of the former Westinghouse site. That is going to be a massive project. Uh, you mentioned the crews that are going to be needed to build that project. It is six hundred and forty thousand square feet. It's going to be a four and a half story tall building, so bigger than what is over there now. They're not just retrofitting that building, they're going to sort of re, redevelop the whole thing. And this project is, I heard, is going to be as big or bigger than Monroeville Mall.
Um, I, I know that it's going to be a, a fairly significant structure, but I think what's important here is that, um, the remediation of that site. I think as we now know, that site was, um, the site of a health department fine of over a million dollars, the largest I think the county ever gave out because of the activities there. But the nature of the remediation that needs to take place is going to cost millions and millions of dollars. And I think that's going to be a benefit to this as well and has about environmental positive impact because that's going to be done going forward. But yeah, it's going to be a site, but I think also uh, because of the issues that have been raised by the residents in terms of, you know, buffer zones, in terms of sound walls, in terms of replacement of trees and things of that nature, I do think that um, it's not going to be a site that's going to be, uh, out of place, so to speak, um, what we've recognized to be there now.
And, and that's a very interesting point that you brought up about the remediation. So you have Amazon sort of foot the bill for that instead of the taxpayers in the future. I think that's probably a big win for people in our region. The other thing that I think is being overlooked here, Churchill Country Club is not too far away. That's going to be like a nature preserve now. Um, I heard that's going to be a park of some sort. So if people are worried about the trees being cut up for the, um, for the new facility, for Amazon, you're actually gaining a park on that beautiful property that was Churchill Country Club, which could be redeveloped, could have been redeveloped as well.
Yeah, that now is in the hands of the LEA, the LEA Land Trust. We work closely with them, the state officials and the like. Um, and that'll be a, a nature park. We'll have some other amenities that'll be added to it as we go forward that have benefited the community. And, uh, but also there's some activity in what's called the Blackwood Civic Association. So there are those type of things. And I understand, again, these are things that I've picked up through this process. The, the, the tree issue is, I think, an important one. Um, and I think the idea is going to be, they're going to replace, I think, the thousand of the trees that are going to be removed, uh, but also give the borough an opportunity to do four or five hundred trees throughout the borough to, to compensate for uh, the loss of some of the trees on that site. But then there'll be other replacements in the future as they go forward. So I think the concerns that people have raised, Kevin, as they've been very helpful, I think the developer will, has worked and will continue to work to be able to meet the request of the residents in the community of concerns. Uh, so we're not there yet, but I think, uh, this dialogue, this discussion, these, this process is going to help drive it to a place. I would imagine at some point there'll be a decision, but I think what we know to be now uh, may be different than what we know it could be, uh, in, in the future.
So you're confident this can be a win, win, win for everybody in the region?
It, it can be, I think, but I think given, but it has to recognize the concerns that the residents have raised. I mean, it's only a win, 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 um, if everybody recognizes that it's, it's a good thing for not only Churchill, but the region as well. If we don't address the issues of the pollution, we don't address some of the other issues in inadequate fashion, then I think it could be, you know, could continue to be problematic. But, you know, the traffic things, for example, the county, the state, and the local engineers have all signed off on the traffic plans. So that's a positive step, but there may be more that needs to be done in that space. Uh, with respect to the water runoff and the like, you know, they're fifty percent greater than what they're supposed to be in terms of eliminating water runoff. All those type of things, I think, actually benefit the community in that regard going forward, what we know it to be now. But more work needs to be done, more acknowledgement of these concerns need to be addressed, and I think that will take place over the course of time.
Well, you and your staff and also the Churchill Borough Council and also the citizens are all doing their job as lo, as well as Amazon. So, um, thank you very much for the update. We truly appreciate your time. State Senator Jay Costa.
Okay. All right. So that was a very informative interview. I think there are some take-home messages from it. One, there is a process that we are following. Two, the concerns that citizens have raised have been useful. This will be a win, win, win if we work together. And as the great French thinker Voltaire said, "Don't let perfect be the enemy of good." As Senator Costa said, "County and state officials have been drawing attention to our region for business opportunities. This is the most significant and single largest project for the Eastern Corridor for a number of years. The challenges of redeveloping the Westinghouse property cannot be met without a corresponding substantial effort by local government representatives charged with those challenges. My sincere thanks goes out to members of the planning commission, the borough council, the borough engineers, the solicitor, the borough staff, for their many months of incredible dedication of time, expertise, diligence, and personal sacrifice in the interest of all borough residents. I strongly support the project and approving the conditional use. There are many reasons why we should do this. Active until the nineteen nineties, this one hundred and thirty-three acre property housed over one million square feet and seven buildings, but abandoned for over twenty years, these blighted buildings are loaded with asbestos, lead, mold, and chemicals. I've taken some pictures up there. Here's one of the trees, huge limb down, standing water all over the place. God knows what insects are breeding in it. Here's one of the buildings boarded up, board rotting, weeds growing. Here's building four oh one. Here's building five oh one. And then this was after a rainstorm. I don't know if you're going to be able to hear the rain, but water just pouring in to this building after a rainstorm. As Senator Costa confirmed, without costly demolition and remediation, this site poses serious environmental problems. Two, it is easy to oppose a project with misleading statements that stoke fear and give no realistic alternatives. Simply put and confirmed by Senator Costa, no other feasible use for this property has been proposed, given its massive demolition and remediation costs. Three, we need to rely on the legal process governed by the conditional use ordinance. The process required reliance on professional work of engineers, consultants, other experts, and governmental agencies, as well as the relevant science and facts. Four, this process in turn required Hillwood to conduct, submit, refine, and resubmit numerous professional engineering studies demonstrating zoning compliance on air quality, stormwater runoff, lighting, sound, traffic, parking, and trees. All of these critical studies have now been finalized and approved by the borough's engineers and other professional experts. They have been reviewed and passed on by relevant governmental agencies. Acceptable mitigations and project changes have been agreed to, and the process will include additional reasonable conditions agreed to for project completion. This process has yielded improvements and changes to the project that will benefit the borough and all its residents. Despite this excellent record, there have been comments from some that the borough and Hillwood have not listened or responded to residents' concern via the many Zoom meetings. This simply is not true. Here are some examples of Hillwood and Borough's responses to the concerns raised by our residents.
He's a professor too.
First, Hillwood has done the following: reduce the square footage of the building by twenty percent. Commit it to extensive traffic improvements that will improve the flow of traffic at major intersections. Three, reduce the parking spaces. Four, we'll plant fourteen hundred new trees to replace mature trees on a one-to-one basin, even those that are invasive, diseased, or in fair or poor condition. This is nearly three times the number of trees initially proposed to be planted. Four hundred of those can be used at the Churchill Greenway and other borough properties. Five, we'll add a conservation easement in the southern part of the property to better preserve the greenlands and streams that pass through it. Six, double the requirement for a twenty percent reduction in the rate of stormwater runoff to reduce it by forty percent or more in all storm events compared to the current status. This will significantly mitigate longstanding flooding problems in the borough. Seven, agreed that Amazon trucks will not access three seventy-six via Churchill Road. Eight, added a sidewalk and bike lane across the site from Beulah Road to Greensburg Pike for resident enjoyment. Nine, reduce the height of lamp posts in the parking field from forty feet to twenty-four feet. Ten, change the sound walls from wood to concrete with Borough having aesthetic input on the design of both the sound walls and the returning walls. And eleven, improve the pedestrian access to the park and ride at Beulah and McCready. And then the planning commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the conditional use application, but subject to recommended conditions that address residents concerned. Although these remain to be finalized, this shows that the planning commission has certainly taken into account comments by the residents in the commission's recommendation to council. Okay. Number six reason for the project. We'll generate, this project will supply new tax revenues that are greatly needed. Assuming the property is assessed at a construction cost of three hundred million, there would be new annual real estate tax revenues of over two million for the borough, over nine million for the school district, and over one million for the county. I believe we all need to think seriously about the borough's financial projections with and also without this project. Seven, the project will provide one thousand to fifteen hundred full-time job with immediate benefits and educational reimbursement as outlined by Amazon. One hundred of these jobs will be managerial jobs with a starting salary of at least sixty thousand dollars. The project will also provide significant construction jobs and other important local regional benefits. And eight, dear to my heart, as Senator Costa said, "Amazon is building a relationship with the Woodland Hill School District to be a feeder system for some of its graduates to not only work at Amazon after they graduate, but also to enable them to go to college with full educational reimbursement of their tuition. Having full health and educational benefits for workers who come from economically disadvantaged communities is big." Finally, there is a vocal minority of citizens who are opposed to this project. I have talked with many of my neighbors and friends in Churchill. Some say they feel bullied and do not want to offend some of their neighbors. I can attest to this. The vast majority of residents have not attended or spoken at the meetings, but they do not oppose the project. They support the project outright, where they believe that our council will consider all the facts and evidence of this project and will do what is right for all of the residents of Churchill. The transformational impacts of this project are substantial and will benefit all of us. I support this project. Council's approval will permit this important project to proceed to the next stage, consideration of Hillwood's land development plan. Consistent with Senator Costa, we should continue to trust in the science, the facts, Hillwood and Borough professionals, and the legal process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rotzinger. I'll let you unshare or stop sharing here so we can see the gang. Okay, um, we are a little bit past eleven o'clock. Uh, Alex, do we have more public commenters?
Yeah, so there's another thirteen individuals after Eric who have put their hand up.
Okay. Well, with that said, we know, uh, we need another night. Um, hopefully, we can, uh, we can get this finished up after the regular council meeting. Uh, we would start at eight PM on Monday, October eleventh. Uh, same link on the Borough website. Um, I would ask that, you know, it sounds like with thirteen people, I'd like to think we can, we can get this done in those, those three hours where a lot of Monday night. Uh, we certainly appreciate, uh, you know, some understanding from those residents to try to be succinct and efficient in their comments. Um, you know, we understand this is a, you know, an important issue to, to many, to the entire borough. And, and I know council has repeatedly indicated a desire to, to hear the thoughts and concerns of, of the public, and they're going to continue along that path. Uh, but, you know, it would be ideal if we can, if we can wrap up that night. Um, so just something to keep in mind. Uh, we will also revisit the issue of the, uh, supplemental reports, uh, and, uh, essentially Exhibit sixty-seven, I guess, is the best way to refer to it. Uh, between now and then. is the best way to refer to it, between now and then, and we'll, we'll deal with that on the record again on, on Monday night, hopefully. So that said, unless there's anything from any council members or Alex that I'm forgetting to address here. Go on once. Anything from council, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Ferguson?
No, not from Dwight Ferguson.
No, nothing here.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, everybody, again, for your continued patience. We will be back for lucky number 13 on Monday. Have a good night.